Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum for the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, District Five. There are two candidates running for the one open seat in District Five, Margaret Abicoga and Sally Lieber. My name is Eleanor Yick, the co-director of Voter Services for the League of Women Voters, which covers southwest Santa Clara Valley, which covers the cities of Los Gatos, Monteserino, Campbell, and a segment of west San Jose. The Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors elects their trustees by area. The two candidates again for tonight's forum are Margaret Abicoga and Sally Lieber. Tonight, we have both candidates present, of course. I would also like to acknowledge our voter service team who organized tonight's forum, Meg Guyberson, Sophia Cow, Linda King, Patty Tennant, Amy Vu, Eleanor Yick, and Frances Jean. And now, a little information about the League of Women Voters. The League has been empowering and defending democracy for over 100 years. It has two separate and very distinct roles, voter service and public education, which is what we're doing tonight, and action and advocacy. The League is nonpartisan organization for men and women, and the League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate. Voter Services, which we are engaged in tonight, consists of candidate forums, our pros and cons on ballot measures, you can find those listed on our website now, voter registration events, and we encourage everybody to use vote411.org. It's your one-stop site for information about the elections, all the questions you might have, and you can get a copy of your personalized ballot by accessing that event. The League is a grassroots organization. There are five leagues in Santa Clara County. When you join one of them, most people join the one that they live in, their geographic area, but you're welcome to join any league, but then you automatically become a member of the League of Women Voters of the Bay Area, the League of Women of California, which is the state level, and the national level. Now, this slide highlights for you some or all of the Santa Clara County voters will find on their ballot. And of course, you have a presidential race, you have a very important federal office, which is being contested at this time, Congressional District 16. You will have some candidates for various state senate seats and assembly seats. You will hear the candidates tonight for the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, Seat Five. There will also be a candidate forum for the Superior Court, Seat Five, the Santa Clara County Board of Education, Seat Three, and there are other seats available. And then you will have some local towns and city councils and some local school boards. And you will also have some local measures. If you live in our league's area, you will have local measures from the city of Campbell, the Campbell Union High School District, the Campbell City Council, the Union School District, and the Los Gatos School District. And again, you can get a copy of your own personalized ballot if you go onto the website, vote411.org, enter your address and your zip code, and you will get a copy of your ballot. And once you do get that ballot, I think as we know now, you can return your ballot in one of three ways. You can use the US mail, make sure that it is postmarked be on or before November 5th. You don't have to put a stamp on it, it's prepaid. You can drop your ballot off at a secure ballot drop box, or you can go to a vote center, which has many services available for you there. If you need a new ballot for some reason, you can get it there. So a vote center is a very important place that voters can visit if they need additional help. One reminder I do want to give to all voters, it's extremely important that when you sign your ballot envelope, it must match exactly the way your name was when it was mailed to you. So check out how your name was listed, and then you need to sign your ballot in the exact same way. And you can go to always rovservices@santaclaracountYGovernment.org and find more information about your ballot. Tonight, you are going to be meeting the candidates who are voting, who are running to become the representative for District Five in Santa Clara County. This is an extremely large district, many diverse, different communities, urban, rural, coastline, mountains, and of course, diverse communities have diverse needs. Next slide. And now, I will turn it over to our moderator for this evening, our co-director of Voter Services, Sophia Cow.
Thank you, Eleanor. Hi, good evening. My name is Sophia Cow. I'm the co-director of the voter service. It's my great honor to be the moderator for this important race. So before we begin, I would like to highlight for the audience some ground rules that the candidate have agreed to observe during the forum. The League supports accepted norms of civil discourses, and in that light, the candidate have agreed to follow those norms that were outlined in the document they received. For example, candidate have agreed not to interrupt each other and to refrain from naming or making personal statements against another candidate. Also, if a candidate failed to follow the League guideline, they may be asked to leave the forum. Candidate also have agreed to follow the allotted response times. Candidate are reminded that they don't have to use the full-time allotment, but are requested not to exceed the allotted time. So now, let's on to our forum. I'm now pleased to welcome and introduce the two candidates who are running for the one open seat on the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisor for Seat Five. Candidate, please put your video on when I call your name. Margaret Abicoga. Ms. Sally Lieber. Yeah. Margaret, please turn on your audio microphone. Thank you. Candidate, we so appreciate your willingness to participate in this virtual forum tonight. During tonight's forum, when the candidate are answering questions, a timer will appear on the separate screen. Our IT director, Amy Vu, will now show the audience and the candidate the timer. So let's welcome Amy. Amy, you want to turn on your video? Okay, so this is the timer. So please know that the color around the timer changes, but it's near the allotted time for the question. Candidate are requested to end their sentence once the timer ends. So this forum, it's scheduled to last approximately one hour. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce herself by answering this question as their opening statement. What specifically qualifies you to serve on the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisor, Seat Five? The candidate will make their opening statement in alphabetical order. After opening statement, candidate will have 60 seconds to answer subsequent questions, which have been submitted through the registration process, obtained from social media sites, or developed by our league members. I, as a moderator, will announce and enforce the time limits for each question. And lastly, the forum will close with the candidate speaking in a reversed order from the opening statement, answering this question. What question do you wish you had been asked tonight? Why and how would you have responded? For that question, candidate will have 90 seconds to close. All right. We have everything lined up. Now, let's begin. Candidate, please answer this question as your opening statement. What specifically qualifies you to serve on the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisor, Seat Five? Candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. We will begin with Margaret.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm Margaret Abicoga. I'm currently a councilwoman with the city of Mountain View. I've been mayor twice during the Great Recession in 2009, where I led the city out of a budget deficit, and we've had surpluses ever since. And then in 2020, during COVID, the COVID pandemic, where I led the city to provide as much assistance to our residents and our businesses. So I have led through crisis. In addition to my service on the Mountain View City Council, I serve on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority, which I helped start, the Valley Transportation Authority, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the Caltrain Board, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and the City Association of Santa Clara County. And I'm now running for Santa Clara County Supervisor to ensure that every family has access to housing and safe neighborhoods, quality healthcare and mental health, behavioral health services, good-paying jobs, and clean air, water, and open spaces for us and our future generations. I bring an unrelenting commitment to this work based on my lived experiences as a daughter of immigrant parents who had no access to affordable healthcare, as a working mom, as a barrier-breaking woman of color in this county, and as a breast cancer survivor. I've worked hard on addressing local housing issues and keeping the neighborhoods safe. I don't come from means or money, and I'm not running for an eye, with an eye out for my next race. I promise to fight for every day for you and for every family in this county so that everyone can thrive. Thank you. Sorry, I lost that timer. Thanks.
Well, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I so much appreciate the League of Women Voters, and I've been a league member for many, many years, over 30 years, and just appreciate all the work that goes into putting on forums like this. I, my experience includes being a local city councilwoman and mayor in Mountain View. I was a county commissioner focused on social services, a big part of what the county does. I served in the state assembly for three terms and have served on regional boards, including the VTA and the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority, as well as the Moffett Restoration Advisory Board. I currently sit on the State Board of Equalization, and since I chair that board, I also sit on the Franchise Tax Board. So I've gotten a view into funding of local and including county services from that work. The things that I've really championed are issues around homelessness, around wages in our state, environmental issues, including clean air and clean water. I have been recognized for many of my bills in the state legislature being the first of their kind in the country, especially those dealing with women's health with corrections issues, part of what the county does as well. And I was really motivated to run by being asked by a number of community members. So that's why I'm running for this office.
You have the time in the following question to go to detail lots of topics. So now, we will move on to questions submitted through the registration process or developed by our league members. The candidate will now have 60 seconds to respond to each question. So that, so if you, you run out of time, please finish the sentence you're talking. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your honoring the time system. So now, 60 seconds for each question, and the candidate will respond to the following question in randomized order. We'll take ten to start. Okay, so the second question, what are the one or, what are the one or two top issues facing the county, and how do you think they should be addressed? So we'll start with Sally.
Thank you. The top two have absolutely got to be housing and healthcare. We have a crisis in terms of housing and some positive steps forward in terms of healthcare. In terms of homelessness and access to housing, I really believe in a laddered approach that includes shelter space, something that our county is critically short on, transitional housing with good programming that is helpful for the people who live there. Also, micro units that can help to stabilize people, converted hotel rooms, and ensuring that we have enough family housing and housing for our fastest-growing part of the homeless community, which is our seniors. And in terms of healthcare, I'd like to mention that we have some big advances that are coming. Medical is covering non-senior adults now.
So Margaret, your turn.
Thank you. So the top two issues-
I started timer, Amy. 60 seconds.
Okay, thank you. The top two issues that I see, one is public safety, and this is something that I hear constantly. I have walked the entire district, District Five, and I'm knocking on doors and asking folks, you know, what are the issues of concern to them? And time and time again, I hear public safety. We've had an uptick in property crimes, burglaries, unfortunately, smash and grabs. And so I have always been a champion for public safety, both police, fire, and emergency response. And that's why I've been endorsed solely by all of the public safety organizations, as well as the sheriff and the district attorney. So that's one issue. And then the other issue is our fiscal responsibility. The county is facing a budget deficit, and to do, be able to do anything to provide services, we really have to have a strong foundation financially. And I've been able to do that at the city as mayor again and during the Great Recession, and I can, will continue to do that at the county. Thank you.
Let's move on to the next question. Homelessness and the high cost of housing have been identified as major issues in the county. What can be done to alleviate them? So let's start with Margaret.
I'm very proud of what we've been able to do in the city of Mountain View on both issues, homelessness and housing, and especially affordable housing. What I've seen over my years of service is that we really have to address this issue in it with a multi-pronged approach. There's no one answer. And we really have to try different strategies, and we've done that in the city, starting from safe parking lots for vehicle dwellers, transitional housing projects. We have two project, Home Key Projects, which we've been able to build in nine months on the first one, and the second one that's coming online at the end of this month has been about a 13-month process, so very quickly done. Affordable housing, we have about nine projects with the, in partnership with the county, and we've doubled the number of below-market rate units during my time on the city council, and then continuing to allow for more housing. But with homelessness, we have provided and need to provide wraparound services, case management, to help folks be able to get to permanent affordable housing options. Thank you.
Sally, in case you need me to repeat the question, feel free to let me know. Okay. Are you ready for this question? Go ahead, Sally.
I am ready, but we can barely hear you, Sophia.
No, thank you for letting me. Is it better?
Thank you. I'll just say that in terms of housing and homelessness, we need more supply of all types of housing. And some of the, the options that I'm especially excited about are the ADUs, the granny flats that can either be behind or attached to a single-family home, and increasing the capacity of our neighborhoods through the use of those. I do think that we have to strengthen our shelter system. It's really been the, the first season last winter where we saw a significant number of children and even infants in encampments. And that, that cannot be the case. And so I think that we need to look at motel conversions, bringing them online as quickly as possible, and looking at the fact that we just need workplace, workforce housing, sometimes without case management, but just for working families in our county.
Thank you. Next question. What do you think is the best way to found affordable housing? Let's start with you, Sally.
Yes, I, I think that we should be pushing for a statewide housing bond, and that we should also consider another housing bond for Santa Clara County itself. There was the proposal for a $20 billion, nine-county bond, and I think it was just too big for the current economic times to really get approved by the, the majority of the voters. And there will be a measure on the upcoming November ballot to decrease the, the size, the majority that's needed to pass funding measures. I think that that's very critical. And I think that we can help really by helping with the technical support and possibly funding for homeowners who want to build units on their property and provide those as well. The lease costs obviously are as safe parking, and that has to be a very important part of the mix.
Thank you. Margaret, same question.
Thank you. Yes, so as mentioned earlier, I think we have to support a variety of housing types in terms of how to fund them. In 2016, I was happy, I was very proud to help campaign for Measure A, the Santa Clara County Affordable Housing Bond Measure, that brought in $950 million. And as a result, 5,500 units of affordable housing have been or are being built at this time. I would call that a success. We have to continue to find that funding. And I actually was on the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority that worked on the regional, the $20 billion regional housing bond measure. Unfortunately, because of some legal challenges, we had to pull it off the ballot in November, and polling's actually not doing well for any kind of bond measure. But this is because the state couldn't fund affordable housing anymore, and so we had to come up with our own measures. And I think that's what we need to do is to look at what's best for Santa Clara County in the immediate future.
Let's move on to another question. What ideas do you have to increase revenues or reduce spending to address the anticipated budget gap? So we'll start with you, Margaret.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, I've had quite a bit of experience in this and having to had, close our budget deficit in the city. I also served on VTA as vice chair when they were facing a $40 million budget deficit, and we had, we closed that. So it's really a balance of finding efficiencies, reducing costs. And what's key to that is making sure that we have a transparent process. We went out to the community, asked the community, you know, what their priorities were, and made sure that we protected the most important priorities. On the other side of revenue generation, that's really been a focus of mine as the city. We need funding to continue our services. So things that I've been learning about, the county used to have an economic development director. They haven't had one in many years. I'd like to look at reinstating that position. Land, the county owns land. We've done, we've used our land in the city for revenue generation. Those are a couple of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was serving in the state assembly when we had the largest budget shortfall in, in California history, $29.5 billion. And it was a very painful exercise to cut our way out of that. And, and I think that the most important thing that you can do in a budget crisis is to reduce the spending as much as you can, as early as you can. So I, I think that unfortunately, it's going to take cutting some of the items that are nice to have in favor of strengthening the core functions of the county, things like public safety and emergency response. And so that's what I'm going to be looking for solutions in. And then I think that it's a great development that the state is going to be paying for more uninsured care through the county hospital system. And we should be looking for other measures to advocate for along those lines.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next question. What do you think of ranked choice voting? And would you support it for our county-wide elections? Sally, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I do support ranked choice voting, and I would support it for our county elections. I think that we always need to be upping our game in terms of reducing the amount of money that is needed to run for office and restricting and lessening the influence of special interests that are out there. I've been a longtime board member of the Clean Money Campaign's Education Fund. And I, I think that there's just a lot of measures that can be adopted to get to the point where we have a greater variety of candidates running and more chance of the communities will really coming through that. I have tried to model this in my own campaign. I've been very restrictive in my spending. I call it frugal. Other people call it cheap. But I think that we have to look for ways to put the highlight on the public interest more.
Thank you. Margaret.
I'm certainly open to ranked choice voting, but I, I do have some concerns, and I'm still researching, talking with folks to understand better. But my real concern is that we have an incredibly diverse community in Santa Clara County, our population. We have folks from many different backgrounds, a large immigrant community, people who become citizens and, you know, want to vote, and which is so wonderful. But sometimes it's challenging to figure out how to vote, where to vote. You get the ballot and the sample ballot, and there's so many things on there. And so I just want to make sure that it's a, a process that's easy, understandable, and accessible. And in particular, I would like to make sure that we have multilingual services because we do have a county that has, you know, folks who speak many different languages, and English is not necessarily their first language. Thank you.
Let's move on to the next question. District Five is very large geographically and home to many diverse community groups. How would you communicate with and learn about the need of your various constituent groups? So we'll start with you, Margaret.
I've been doing that during the campaign and that I have been visiting every single community. There are nine cities in District Five, and I'm proud that I have the majority of the city council members in each of these cities who have endorsed me, and it's because I've been in every community. I've worked with a lot of these folks already during my 16 years on the city council, and I also served on the County Board of Education before that. But in terms of continuing that, it's really about being accessible, being out there. You know, I've been doing farmers' markets, we've been doing house parties. And what I'd like to do if, if I'm elected is to continue that accessibility by having town hall meetings in every community. I meet with any, everyone who wants to meet with me. That's always been my rule. I'd like to do advisory boards on different issues that affect the county and just being in the community on a regular basis at farmers' markets and whatnot. Thank you.
Sally.
Thank you. Well, our, our outgoing supervisor, Joe Smidion, has really set the gold standard of being in every city and having strong communications with people. And I saw him do that when I served in the state assembly with him and have been so impressed by all the ways that he communicates with people where they are. And I think that's what's essential. I am especially interested in creating a community congress among the individuals who live in our unincorporated areas that don't have- that don't have a city council to go to. So the county board supervisors is their local government. And I um would like to have quarterly meetings with regional um parts of our unincorporated areas. And really keep in touch uh in particular about issues like public safety and response time in the unincorporated areas.
Climate change is increasing the risk of wildfires. What can be done to improve the way the county is handling the wifi risk? So we start with you, Sally.
Yeah, I, I think that um there are many, many things that we can be doing, mostly led by CAL FIRE around reducing our wildfire risk and reducing uh the instance where there are uh wildfires that cross um from uh from uh our unincorporated areas potentially into towns. And we saw that in the Santa Rosa um fire that there were very tragic outcomes for having a wildfire that crossed um into town. Um, what I've heard from our firefighters is that they don't have the level of support that they need uh to be able to adequately deal with our county. And um in particular, to respond when um it would be times of um heavy traffic and be able to get out across our communities. And I think we need to really work on that and resolve it. And especially in terms of radio interoperability, it's not working. It's been broken for a very long time and it has to be fixed.
Margaret.
I've been a big champion of, again, public safety and fire is a, a, a big component of that. And that's why I've been endorsed by all of the fire uh firefighters associations um in the camp, in this District Five. Um, what I've always uh stood for is proper staffing, proper training and proper equipment. And so in order to reduce response times, which is really key when it comes to fires, you need to get to the fire as quickly as possible. We do have to have that proper staff, staffing, uh proper equipment. And you know, this is starting from fi- fire engines. But I'm really interested in the um AI technology that's being tested out right now um to put monitors around uh to detect early, uh early detection of fires. So then that can increase response times. Um, and then again, I, I agree, there's uh things like making sure that we have um signal control and priority for emergency vehicles. Um, and then preventative measures as well as um just making sure the land, things are being lands and grass and whatnot is being cut so that um it can prevent fires from spreading.
Thank you for your sharing on all this known platform and idea about this important issues. Let's take a pause and the switch to a slightly lighthearted questions. So like to hear some of your personal story. So how about share some special story or background about you that not many people know about? Okay, so who want to start first?
I can, I can definitely start. If, if Margaret doesn't want to jump in yet, but um I think one of the things that um people don't know about me is that um growing up with a very difficult childhood taught me uh to be uh super strong. And um my father was uh a child with the uh that was a survivor of a parent's suicide. And um I think he really um passed on a lot of those challenges to me and my siblings. And overcoming them has made me very, very, very strong and very empathetic. And it's something that has helped me when I've done a lot of work with refugees and uh other people who have experienced trauma and are recovering from trauma. And it's something that um I think has been a real challenge throughout my life. But has given me the gift of being a survivor and being very, very strong.
Margaret, how about your story?
I, I know some people know this about me, but not a lot of folks. Um, and it's been a while. But I uh used to do a martial art called kendo, Japanese fencing. And um I hold a third degree black belt in, in the martial art. I uh also um they have a national championship every three years. And I was on the, they have a regional teams and I was on the Northern California Women's Team. And we took the gold medal. It was back in two thousand and two. And um I had just had my first daughter in that October. And three weeks after giving birth began training, which included eight to nine hours every Saturday and Sunday uh for eight to nine months before the, the, the tournament. And it was a real test of character and, and you know, I wanted to just test myself and challenge myself. Um, it's mostly a male dominated uh martial art. Um, so there's a lot of challenges there, but it really provided me a strength of character. There's a lot of discipline and, and then the perseverance. And I think that helped me a few later on when I had breast cancer. I'm a survivor now, eight years surviving. And it's been really that strength that I've been able to build over the years uh stemming from my martial art training that um helped me overcome challenges. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful to learn this personal stories. Yeah. Now let's get back to the serious topic. Next question from the league member upon the community. What are your idea, what are your ideas about how traffic congestion can be improved throughout the county? So we'll start with Sally.
Thank you. Well, uh, uh, I recently saw that the VTA is almost back to pre-pandemic ridership, which is really a great thing. And I think that every single person that we can um get onto public transit is someone who's not on the road. As a public transit rider, um myself, I, I think that we need to do everything in our power to um really fast track when the state resurfaces uh El Camino, which is one of the most uh well-traveled arteries in our county. Um, and that we always keep um an eye on uh fares and how to keep fares lower. Um, I think there's a reason that you never see um working people on Caltrain. And it's because Caltrain fares are, are quite high in, in contrast to our buses. And I, I think to have that ridership, um we should take another look at um bus rapid transit and um designating a lot, uh lanes for uh VTA buses. And we should work to um really heal the uh, the gulf between uh VTA and, and SAM trans.
Thank you, thank you. Margaret, your turn. Give you ten more seconds. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So transportation has been an area that I've really focused on for my entire time on the city council. As a council member, I've served on these regional boards and I was on VTA chaired the board uh during the Great Recession. And so we um had to close that deficit and keep the agency going. I'm, as mentioned, on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and Caltrain Board. And I'm so excited that we were able to launch electrified train service a, a couple of weekends ago. And um we're now uh being, we can provide transit uh clean and it, it with clean energy. Uh, so very excited about the future of transit. Uh, we have, because of COVID, experienced a drop in ridership. So our, our goal is to bring it back. I'm excited to see that VTA is near pre-COVID numbers. Um, and so continuing to in, in, increase transit options, tying it into micro mobility uh so that we can have connectivity. And then fares too. I agree, we're working on how to provide lower fares for those um who are in need. Thank you.
Next question. There appear to be a great concerns in the county about crime. So what we, what would be your proposal to make our community safer? So Margaret, start with you.
I touched on this earlier, but again, uh I would, as I've mentioned, in terms of public safety, proper staffing, proper training and proper equipment are really key to that. Uh, I am um proud and grateful to be endorsed by the county sheriff. I think he's been a breath of fresh air. Um, he is uh working to um to in uh improve um the sheriff's department. Uh, they do have some challenges with staffing, so I think that is really important. Overall, actually, the county is experiencing quite a few vacancies in all of their departments. And so to be able to provide strong service, we have to have the people to, to do that. So um that's an area of focus. I mentioned the um equipment and I think that is really key. Um, our city just uh approved a flock cameras. Uh, they um and frankly, all the cities now I think have it except for one. And it's important for us to have the equipment, to talk to each other and to work together to promote uh higher uh public safety.
Annie, question about safety.
Thank you. Um, one issue, one part of this issue that I'm very interested in is uh seeking more funding for what we call vertical prosecutions, which are prosecutions of repeat offenders who have uh offended in multiple counties. And I, I think that we need to do more of that because it's, it's becoming crime organizations that are um involved in the organized shoplifting and organized um smash and grabs. Um, I do think that we have to uh do more about uh perception of safety. I um very much support uh more uh additional license plate readers, especially for in our unincorporated areas. And the response times have got to improve in those areas. It's, it's not enough to just say that it's going to improve someday. I think that we also have to um really tell the story of what is going on and um indicate that it's not homeless people who are committing crimes.
Thank you. Next question. What is your vision for future development of the county fairgrounds? So Sally, you mentioned that.
Thank you. The most important thing for me at the county fairgrounds is affordable housing. I do think that a portion of the county fairgrounds uh should be used in the short term for safe parking. We need to increase the number of safe parking spots. And it used to be the case that there were RV parks in many places on the peninsula and in the South Bay and all over California that were just clean, quiet, safe places for people of very modest means to be able to live. And I think that in the short term, um we should allow that as well as um sanctioned camping. With every single piece of land or every planning opportunity, we have to have in the first discussions of it childcare as a use. And I think that if there um is affordable housing there, we should be planning for childcare in the very first steps of it. Um, and the kind of diversified childcare that we need um from infants to older children.
Margaret.
I was amazed at how much land there is at the county fairgrounds. It's very uh I'm envious because of, in a city like Mountain View, which only has thirteen square miles, the fairgrounds is just so vast. So I think there's so much opportunity and potential and to do many different things there. Um, certainly, uh I know there are plans for uh athletic fields, which I think is um fine, a fine use. It's uh needed for the community. Um, but I would also look at um using some of the space for housing, affordable housing, tiny homes, safe parking. And then I really want to um look at how we can uh generate revenue. As I mentioned earlier, in our city, we have used the land that the city owns uh to lease it out uh to be able to provide revenue for the, the, the community. And so fifteen percent now of our general fund comes from leases and rents, the second highest to property tax. So um I would like to look at a really a mixed use um type of project or being able to use it in many different ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. So next question. Besides your official public service, what are some other community organizations or events have you been involved? Margaret, start with you.
I've been involved uh pretty much since I graduated from college to college. I went to Harvard and I came home and got involved with the community, uh mainly because uh my first job was working for Congresswoman Anna Eshu. And she was someone who really encouraged me to get involved with my community, especially within my own Asian American community. So there is a Japanese American Citizens League I've served on, a Japanese Chamber of Commerce, the San Jose Taiko Board. Um, I was on my neighborhood association, vice chair of that um association. Uh, served on the Human Relations Commission, the Environmental Planning Commission. Uh, and um so quite a few, uh I worked for a nonprofit called Asian Americans for Community Involvement um and was a volunteer with that um organization for a very long time. They provide social services, the largest in South Bay, uh focused on the Asian American community. Um, so uh the list continues, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
So what are your thoughts on how to address the climate, climate change as it pertains to Santa Clara County? So we start with you, uh Margaret.
Actually, I think Sally had, um, didn't get to answer.
Oh, sorry. Sally, I'm so sorry.
I didn't know if it was.
Community service one, yes.
One person. No, it's good. Um, I really, um, where my heart is, is in serving uh low-income people and people that are experiencing homelessness. So I, I think that I'm very well-known for my winter coat drives, uh summer water drives. And um, you know, those have really become sort of year-round efforts. We're collecting coats right now for the, the winter season. And so I'm involved in many, many organizations that um serve people who are um experiencing homelessness and, and many of those folks are experiencing some kind of trauma. An incredible percentage of people who are homeless um have had a head injury. And I think we really need to change that. But in the meantime, we need to have um real compassion for where people are. Um, I also uh provide books to the county jails, juvenile halls and state prisons. And I have a passion for putting a book into every person's hand who's trying to improve their lives.
Thank you. Apologize. Yeah.
No problem.
Let's look at some big picture about climate change. So what is your idea and how know that's going to affect the, the Santa Clara County? The climate change, your thoughts about climate change?
Yeah, I, I my first.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, I think it's already affecting us very profoundly. We've seen the unseasonably hot weather this week. Um, we've had strange storms. We've seen strange storms in other parts of the country. And we just have to do everything in our power at this time to slow down and ameliorate uh the effects of climate change. Um, uh, in Mountain View, we've done a lot of great work towards uh electrification and sustainability. Um, we've also missed um some opportunities that I think are out there. Um, there were some rule changes um last year that has resulted in an eighty-five percent decline in the number of people putting solar on their own homes. And I think we need to uh reverse that. An issue that I don't hear enough about is the impact of sea level rise, bay level rise and groundwater rise that can be pushing our toxic plumes up into the layer that we draw our drinking water from. We've got to work on that.
Thank you. Very important. Margaret.
I have two uh Gen Z college-age daughters and to them and their friends, their peers. Climate change is real and it, I mean, it's real for all of us. But they're the ones who remind me every day how important it is for us to uh combat climate change. And so I've made it one of my priorities. Uh, as I mentioned um in my opening, I helped get seed money to start Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which now sources the energy for twelve cities in the county um in Santa Clara County. Um, what you'll see that in twenty seventeen, when we went into service, the GHG emissions for all of our cities dropped incredibly because of Silicon Valley Clean Energy's um starting of service. So uh clean, um, clean energy is key, electrification. Um, I was uh, I led the charge for reach codes um uh requiring all electric buildings. Unfortunately, there was a legal challenge to that, so we're looking for alternatives. Um, and then transportation is also an area that uh we've been focusing on to electrify. But GHG emission reduction is key to fighting climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. So next one. What motivates you to want to serve as a supervisor of this large? What motivates you to want to serve as a supervisor of this large, complex county? So we'll start with you, Margaret.
So after sixteen years on this Mountain View City Council, I end my term this year. I also served on the Santa Clara County Board of Education. So my passion really has been public service and it comes from my background, my upbringing as the daughter of immigrant parents, working-class immigrants who didn't speak English. And so I was their translator as soon as I learned English, a very typical immigrant story. But what I saw through that experience was the challenges one has when you don't have a voice in our, in our community. And so I've always worked hard to make sure that everyone, regardless of background, has a voice. And that's what keeps me going and continuing in public service. I've certainly enjoyed my time on the city council. I've learned a lot. I've been on many different boards and learned so many of these issues. And I want to continue my service for the county, for this district, to continue to fight to make this the best place that it can be for everyone. Thank you.
Good. Sally, can we hear your vision?
Thank you. My motivation is really around empowering people. We have an especially good county government and one that has been very humanistic in its outlook over time. I think that there's so much more that we can do to meet our current and emerging challenges. I've been in government and in public service for a very long time and, and learned a lot. But my real core of who I've been in my public service is all about the work that the county does. So services for foster youth, for families, for people living with disabilities, sustainability, healthcare, mental healthcare and more are all really at the core of what my public service over time has been about. So I have a great deal of knowledge and, and a lot of experience in this area and that's what motivates me.
Thank you. Candidate, now will be your last questions and your closing statement. What question do you wish you had been asked tonight and why? And how would you had responded? You have ninety seconds to do this closing statement. We will go in the reverse order from the opening statement. So we will begin with Sally.
Thank you. Well, the thing that has been so much on my mind lately has been the, the two hearings and all of the negotiations behind the scenes about dependency care. And this involves children that are severely abused in their home or their family situation. And there have been multiple failures in this area in the county's work recently that has resulted in the death of two infants. And so I've been watching everything that's been going on in this regard. And for me, it's, it's sort of symptomatic of the need for people who are knowledgeable about what the county does and can make county government work well for those who really lack any type of representation in the system. It was really heartbreaking to see the judges coming forward and saying that the dependency care cases just are not coming to them anymore. And there's something that's really broken about the way that we're doing things. We're putting too much pressure on the social workers, but not giving them power. And I think we need that to, to turn around. And that's something that would probably never be asked in a crowdsourced question, but I think really goes to the heart and soul of what the county does.
Thank you. Margaret, your closing statement, what question you wish to be asked and how would you respond?
I, my question would have been, what is your greatest accomplishment? And then why, a lot of times I, I tend to just get work, get things done and not really think about, you know, what have we accomplished? It's always, what's the next, next challenge, the next work to be done? And, but sometimes it is important to reflect on what you've done in the past. And I'm very proud of my record of accomplishments over my almost two decades of elected service. And a lot of that comes from the ability to, of my being able to work with other people. And I think that's reflected in the fact that I have over a hundred and fifty endorsements from elected officials throughout the district and the region because I've worked with people for many, many years, decades and to get things done. But frankly, my greatest accomplishment is personal and that's having two wonderful daughters. And they are my inspiration and my strength for public service. I really never thought about running before I had my first daughter. And when I had her light bulb lit up in my mind and I just felt like I needed to do more for the community, for them, for their future to make sure that they have a bright future and a great place to live. And that's my motivation and that comes from my greatest accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate, we so appreciate your participation to that tonight. We wish you well in your campaign and greatly respect your candidacy for this very, very important office. So audience, thank you for your attendance. So let's put on, we hope that you have learned a lot tonight that will help you make your decision when voting. So in closing, I would like to remind you once more, some of the very important election facts. The general election is on November fifth. Next slide. Please remember to use vote four one one for all your election questions and the resource. Next slide. Here are some other nonpartisan sites to consult with. Next slide. And remember, democracy is not a spectacular sport. We need to all remember to vote. And lastly, I want to remind you that this forum was recorded and will post it in full, unedited version on our Leaks website and in our YouTube channel. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Take care.